Text while you talk.
You text and we'll start.
Yep, we are recording then.
We are recording, okay, thank you. So, good evening and thank you all for being here, all that are in the audience. I'm trying to make sure I can see that. Dave Favel, why do I have a hand in front of your picture? Dave, he's got his sound off. Well, whatever.
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, there's a, on my picture of you, there's a white hand. What does that mean?
I don't have a white hand.
No, it's a white. It's a white.
It's a light.
I know what a hand looks like.
Eric, move your cursor. It will move the hand out of the way.
Okay, thank you. Now I lost the picture. Now I'm off.
Can move the cursor a little bit further up.
To where?
Anywhere on the screen, a little further up on the screen.
Yeah. I have nothing now, Isaiah.
No, no, Isaiah, that's not, that's not what you're seeing. I did that. There is a white.
Anyways, I don't have anything, sorry.
I see the hand, but that's something different, I think.
I have no pictures. I can't see anyone. I have a big Zoom word on my screen.
So, behind the Zoom, if you go down to your icons on the bottom, there's another one that should be lit up that's actually got all the pictures in.
No, don't have it.
Do you have? Can you go on Gallery of You again?
Now I've got everybody. I'm back. I don't know. I'm here. I'm here. Sorry. Sorry.
Okay, James just sent me a text message. He said he sent you and Tim an email. His work meeting is running over, but he's joining us as soon as he can.
Okay, Ted, did you get that email, Tim?
I'm gonna check right now. Up, right up until before this meeting, I did not, but.
I didn't either, so.
Came in at 5:59.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna begin, and I guess we'll begin.
Come on, Tim, you're not reading your email at 5:59?
Oh, I'm not, to tell you the truth.
I was, I was trying, Mr. Brown.
We're gonna begin on page one. Is that okay with everybody? We have the superintendent's operating budget on page one with an explanation. And of course, once again, what a wonderful job always done by our administration in presenting our budget. Do I have any questions, any discussion on page one from anyone? I'm not missing anything, am I? Okay, so we can go on to page two, which is the superintendent's summary of major budget increases and decreases. Any questions on that?
And if I can just highlight real quick on this page, under the purchase services, you'll notice for regular ed, the increase for medical and athletic training. Basically, it's, it's not an increase. We just moved that account from the salary section to purchase services. Mr. Darrenowski actually pointed that out last year during the budget process. So, it will, you'll notice the decrease in the salary section, and then you'll notice that account with a large increase in the purchase service, but it's really just a swap of funding from one section of the budget to the other.
Okay. Everybody got that? Any questions on that, anyone? Thank you, Sheri.
Welcome.
Then on the next page, which is just a graph chart of our operating budget, our total regular education budget, special ed, and total major projects and equipment. Questions, discussions on that page, anyone? Please make sure I don't miss anyone. Everybody okay?
Mrs. Carmody, if I could just say, is that generally around, is that number, those numbers generally around what it is, the 72.2, is that?
Yeah, that's pretty much been the split.
For how, just out of curiosity, as long as I've been on the board, has it been just around that?
Special ed, the percent of special education has creeped up slowly. If memory serves, I think the percent of special education, or the percent of the budget attributed to special education five years ago or so was about 25%. So, there's been a, there's been a slow increase in percentage of the budget required for special education.
Slow increase.
Okay.
Okay, Colin, is that all right?
Yeah, that, I just, I was just curious.
Any other questions on that? All right, moving to the next, which is regular and special education budgets continued, which gives salaries, new personnel benefits. Any questions on those? James, welcome.
Hey, sorry about that.
That's okay, no problem. Anytime, James.
Work meetings.
Yeah, I know. Any questions on that page? I guess we can turn to page five, which is regular education summary.
A repeat of page one, so we don't really get into the numbers until we get to page seven and, yeah, seven and eight.
So, I'll just move on from page five, right? Everybody? Okay. I'm so glad you're all answering me. Thank you.
I said, uh-huh.
I didn't hear you, Colin. The next is just the regular education summary. And Sheri said we go to page seven. Am I right?
Yes.
Okay. On page seven, we see our increase and, we see the total existing personnel salaries, new personnel salaries, anticipated turnover, total salaries. Do you want me to read that number, Sheri, or do you want to read it for me?
The total salary proposed for 2122 is $48,503,218.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
You can ask anything you want, Bob. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I know we always figure in retirements. Sheri, where do we stand with retirements right now as of what, January?
Yep, so I've always budgeted 10 for the superintendent's proposal, and in fact, we received 10 by the deadline for notification for the March incentive. So, we are currently sitting with 10 certified staff retirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
David, Darrenowski.
Yes, the 399, that's the net amount, Sheri?
That is the net amount of taking a master's salary at the max versus a master's one, the differential, times 10.
But I mean, is, is that take into account any sick time?
No, the accumulated sick payout is in a separate line item. So, this is truly just the potential savings in salary for the 10 certified staff members.
Okay, Dave, any more on that? Mr. Darrenowski, anything else?
Well, I know, I'm just trying to equate that number. That's 39, roughly $40,000 per teacher?
Correct, the differential, yes, between a senior teacher leaving and a first-year teacher. It's, it's round numbers. It's like 95 versus 52, 50, you know, I'm just using round numbers. It's almost 99 less 50.
Okay, I get that part, but it's, should we, or do you have it in another spot where we take into account the cost of a teacher leaving?
Yeah, so if you turn to the next page, on page eight, there's an account about two-thirds of the way down the page, account number 12150, retirement compensation, and that accounts for the accumulated sick payout for staff members.
Okay. Mr. Canelon, Joe sent me a text that he thinks he's muted.
He exited and then came back in. He's all set.
Okay, thank you. Dave, does that answer your question?
Yeah, at least I know it's identified. That's fine.
So, you okay with that?
Yep, we're good.
So, I guess we are on page eight. Let's look that over. There.
I got a question, Cam.
Page eight.
Joe's saying he has a question.
Who does?
Joe.
James.
Oh, James. I thought it was Joe.
James is raising his hand.
Stand up, James.
Thanks. So, I guess in general, for regular education, what is the plan for, for the remote learning model that we're doing now for COVID? Is that planned to continue? And do we have any extra staff that we need to hire if we plan to keep that around?
The, the plan is for that not to continue. We're, we're hoping to be post-COVID by then, and we have had some interesting comments from both Department of Public Health and our local health department. We haven't had a comment on it from the State Department of Education yet, but the general feeling is that by the time September rolls around, biggest issue is going to be communication for us and making sure people understand that it's safe to come back to school. In fact, our health director just said as late as this morning that he, he fully believes that by September, anyone who will want to have a vaccine or will have wanted to be vaccinated will have been vaccinated by, by that point in time.
Right.
And then if I can just add on to that, so we did develop this budget, as Mr. Canelon said, with the assumption that we kind of go back to what the normal was pre-COVID for 2122. The only increase as far as any line items really is custodial supplies with the thought process of just continuing, you know, appropriate cleaning throughout the building. But other than that, we don't have any dollars allocated for additional staffing for COVID.
Why is the teacher substitute school business days, why is that zero?
Not giving them.
In conversations with Mr. Medianci, usually we're able to use grant funding for staff members that are doing any types of professional development training at this point, and the substitute account has covered regular staff absences or those school business-related days. And then I just wanted to point out also on this page, I did want to change the account title for the third line down. The data processing salaries is obviously a very outdated terminology, and annually, I say I'm gonna update it, and I neglected to do that. So, I have made a notation for myself to update that to get with the, to get with the time. So, I will work with Mr. Medianci on an appropriate title for the salary classifications in that line.
And so that when we do the presentation to the Board of Finance, that will be updated, Sheri, right?
That's my plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Continuing on page eight, any other questions on, any items on page eight?
I got one more question. For the coaching salaries, are we expecting sports to open up completely for the year? No restrictions from, okay.
Yes.
I do a question.
Are you talking spring sports, Tim?
No.
For the, for the coming year's budget.
Coming year, rather, fall, okay.
Correct.
So, did we have any, did we have any savings, Sheri, this year on the sports that did not take place?
So, I'm having a meeting with our finance committee on Monday to try to update them on where we are. Certainly, there are savings in the transportation line items due to the reduced schedules that we had in the fall, and now that we know we'll be having reduced schedules in the winter. Just know that in regards to official fees, although we will have had fewer contests, we also missed out on the gate receipts that we would have had from having the football season in the fall. So, I don't anticipate really having savings in the officiating line item per se in our budget, but definitely in the transportation line item.
Well, how about coaching salaries? Were they paid in fall?
Coaching salaries were paid in the fall because although they may not have had a complete season, they were able to practice. So, they were paid. I have not had any conversations yet in regards to the winter season, but I, my understanding is even the sports that are unable to have contests, they are still being allowed to practice. So, those coaches are all working this season, and we are anticipating a complete spring season. So, I'm not anticipating any real savings in the coaching salary account.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, the teacher, the teacher substitute is the same amount, but we raised the amount, right?
Yes, so this budget, as you know, you received this budget book prior to the action that you took on Thursday in regards to unaffiliated compensation. So, I will have to do a review of some of those line items and maybe bringing back to you some adjustments if needed.
Yep, thank you.
The substitutes, we did increase, right? Okay. Anything else on page eight? Am I missing anyone?
Dave.
Dave.
Yeah, there was a, hang on, bear with me for a quick moment here. The, let's see, 11, 8, 10. Custodial salaries. Okay, the, I know this, this account increases because of pulling the custodial work at the high school in, you know, into our own full-time employees. Is there gonna be a savings in the purchase services account? We're not having to.
Yeah, so we have recognized savings in the purchase service account in earlier years, and I do know that, so we've got that savings in the previous budget. This increase is primarily for staff moving on the schedule, as well as potential negotiated increases, and also adding one additional part-time custodian, my recollection, at the high school. When Mr. Romano initially put his proposal together, he had a range, trying to estimate the number of custodians for part-time help that we would need at the high school. Last year, we did not fill all of the positions. Like, my recollection is we were one shy, and then throughout the year, realizing that we really needed that full complement of the part-timers, and so we added that staff member in. But that was part of the original proposal that was brought to the committee and the board.
Does that answer your question, Dave?
Yes.
Anyone else? Questions on that page? James, is your hand up?
No, no.
Did I miss anyone? So, we'll go, well, then we have the supporting account information. On page nine. Are there any questions on that? Which supports our new personnel request? Any questions? Page nine. Okay, page 10. Rationale for accounts with an increase in over 5%. And there's your custodial salaries there, Dave. See that? Dave Darrenowski?
Yes, I see that, yep.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Anybody okay?
Yep.
Hang on, I gotta turn the page. Account, salaries account explanation.
This is just detail, right? This explains what each account is.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I think for good, Mrs. Carmody, to hop to page 13 after the benefits tab.
Okay, whatever you say, Sheri. Because you're certainly a little smarter than I am about the, okay, we'll go to page 13. Regular education employee benefit summary.
So, I just, if I can just share, because this obviously is great news. I don't ever recall being in a situation where we are looking at a reduction in the overall benefit cost. So, that's exciting, and you'll see the detail of that actually on page 14. And it's primarily for the health insurance. The health insurance, the self-insurance committee voted basically to establish a funding line for both the town and the Board of Education of $25,250,000. And of that, they've chosen to use $1 million from the fund balance. So, at this time, the amount that we need to pay in, or the funding allocation for 2122 for self-insurance is flat. $24,250,000 is what the anticipated budget was for the current year. So, that amount being flat and the fact that our claims have been positive, therefore, our Board of Ed percentage for our contribution was reduced this year from 76% to 75%. So, that 1% deduction, reduction, allowed us to actually have a decrease in our health insurance account. So, just to be clear, the claims are not anticipated to go down. The claims are anticipated to go up. The premiums for staff will stay fairly flat next year. If any increases, it will be minor, and the increases would really be based on the percentage that they're paying according to their contracts. But this is really great news for our budget, and because of the use of the $1 million in the fund balance, that will all benefit from that in this budget submission. Yeah, and this helped offset the large increase again, and the MERS employer contribution continues to increase. So, you'll see that $90,000 increase in account 2110 fortunately was able to be really offset in our budget with the health insurance decrease.
Sheri, did we waive the wellness visit requirements?
We waived all the wellness visit requirements for the calendar year 2020. So, any employees that were required to have a physical in 2020, we waived those. So, for most, for staff that were in that situation, since each contract only has one year of a wellness requirement, it's essentially deferred until they have a new contract. But right now, staff members that had a wellness requirement for 2021 calendar year, unless barring any unforeseen situations with problems of, you know, doctor offices closing down or something, we're not anticipating having any issues, and we will, we will request compliance with that wellness language.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would that bring me to page 15, guys?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So, you just explained all of that, Sheri, I think, right?
Yeah, and unemployment, honestly, is somewhat of a, you know, it's a projection. It really is a guess. They keep changing the unemployment extensions. You know, we've kept people on our payroll, although we have had part-time staff members who lost maybe second or third jobs that they had and are able to collect. So, that has impacted our line item, but I'm really hoping by next year that that will somewhat flatten out.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from anybody on page 15? None?
No.
Did I miss somebody? No, okay, page 16. Employee benefits account explanation. I don't, I think Sheri can, that's all self-explanatory. I think we can move on to purchase services. Everybody okay with that? Yes?
Yes.
So, on page 17, regular education, regular education purchase services summary.
You'll see, as a whole, this entire section is only increasing by a third of a percent. There's many more accounts that actually have a decrease, I think, than an increase this year, which is pretty exciting. So, I mean, I shouldn't, I guess exciting really isn't the right word, but trying to be, you know, efficient and find cost savings when applicable, and really looking at what prior expenditures have been, we've tried to make reductions wherever we can in these line items.
Very good. Good job. Questions on that? Okay, going on, anybody? I didn't want to miss anyone. Okay, page 18. Anyone? Please don't let me miss anyone. Isaiah, are you lit up?
Nope. I'm good.
You're good, okay. How about page 19, guys?
On copier repairs. This goes to the fact that we're basically a one-to-one district now with more devices being accessed. But I just wanted to real, I just wanted to know if there would be less rar and rare on our copiers in post-COVID, is the district to kind of sort of.
What item numbers that day? Page 18?
Yeah, it's 3, 2, 3, 1, 3. So, I didn't know if that was, that would be a cost savings. I was just more curious about that. Especially if we're more one-to-one, more, more of the one-to-one.
So, our copier repair costs are actually rolled into the contract of our overall lease agreement. So, we currently have a five-year lease for our copiers throughout the district. So, the only way we'd have a savings in that line item is when we look at a new lease, which the current lease will expire in December of 2021. So, it's highly likely that we will be looking at the, you know, at all copiers in the district, and we have extended with a current vendor, extended the, you know, we've gotten new copiers. We usually actually do it a year earlier. However, due to COVID this year and the fact that the copiers had limited usage last spring, we chose to delay the implementation of getting, upgrading the lease a year early. We thought with everything the teachers have going on, the last thing they did in December was to come back to new copiers to figure out how to work those and network those, and get our tech staff bogged down when we're in the midst of trying to get Chromebooks out. So, we will be talking to the finance committee about the appropriate time to either go out to bid or consider a new lease with our current vendor, either this summer or delaying till the Christmas break of next year.
Other question I have, post-COVID, are we going to, is the district going to encourage teachers to keep class material online and encourage them not to copy papers? I know some districts doing that. I do that on a bad thing. I was just curious if that, if that was thought of.
Like, Mr. Medianci, would you like to comment on that, Steve?
Sure. Mr. Favel, are you asking if the teachers are going to be posting assignments more online than printing them off for distribution students?
Yeah, exactly. So, are assignments gonna be more distributed online rather than?
Yeah, I, I would say that's already, that shift has already occurred on a fairly large scale because of the learning management systems, the wide-scale use of Canvas, where all the assignments are posted on there, and usually supporting documents that they need are also posted on there. Same with Google Classroom at the elementary level. I think some of the challenges comes from, and I can hear Mr. O'Shaughnessy speaking now, sometimes if there's an assignment and it's multiple pages, the kids want print materials. You know, they want to be able to just sift through the pages, you know, and it's also in some cases, if you only have one device, which most of our students do, you, it's hard to look at some of the documents that you need and then be, you know, whether you're in a chat or you're posting things in a, you know, a vlog or something like that, you know, to toggle between multiple screens to do that. So, but I would say as a whole, we've definitely made a larger shift to posting assignments and distributing assignments and materials online.
So, is the district gonna be looking at some cost savings as a result of that with paper and?
Yeah, you know, our kids typically didn't do a lot of printing anyways prior to this. They would print to centralized printers, like in the library media centers or at, you know, print centers. It's hard to say for sure what the, what the end result will be in terms of the kids' practices. The other thing, I think, just like all of us as adults, just because they're one-to-one right now, it's gonna take a little time, especially for our fourth graders, fifth graders, sixth graders, to get used to being on a, you know, on a device. And so, they're still may likely tend to print things out and submit things in print form. Lastly, you know, we have to print many times for families that don't have access to printers or printer ink at home, you know. So, some of the software that we've, you know, purchased, we try to work around that, like Kami is a document where you can kind of annotate on PDF documents online versus before, they would have to print out PDF documents and write on them, and then scan them and send a picture back to their teacher of that print document. So, I don't see us needing to rely on the at-home printers that much, as much anymore, you know, post-COVID. But I think there'll still be a need to give kids print materials in some cases.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Answer your question, Dave? You okay with that?
I am.
Okay, so that we were on 18, and now we're looking at 19.
Can I ask a question on 18, Mrs. Carmody?
Sure.
Mr. Darrenowski had his hand up. I was rude.
No, no, go right ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Darrenowski.
Ladies first.
You're such a gentleman, sir. Account 32520, rental of facilities. I'm assuming that $57,000 savings is for the lease of the municipal center that we will no longer have?
Exactly. As you know, this year, we had to pay, I believe it was three months, July, August, September, and next year, we will no longer have those. And next year we will no longer have those payments. So that's a saving.
So that's, okay, that reflects that. And just care of grounds, the account right down below it, we have a savings there. That's very impressive. Are we doing more of our grounds work in-house?
It's honestly just looking at the expenditures, looking at bids that we have currently in place. And we were able to take a small reduction there.
Wonderful, wonderful. Every little bit helps. Thank you.
Mr. Darrenowski?
Yes, legal fees, 31-800. I'm not, we don't have any major negotiations going on this coming year, do we?
We do. The teachers will be up in August.
That's just, but it's just the teachers, right?
It's, well, it's just the teachers, but it is our largest group and usually the most expensive negotiating group we have. And then we're hoping to have a number of contracts settled this spring, although I'm not overly optimistic that they will all be completed by June 30th. We will have the maintenance and custodial and security attendants. It's expiring this June as well as the secretary and food service. As you know, we only did a one-year extension with them for the current year. So we will also begin negotiating with them this spring. And I'm not sure that those will be done prior to June 30th.
Do you know off the top of your head what we pay per hour for legal services?
Not off the top of my head. It depends which attorney is working on any of the cases. They have different billable rates.
When you get an opportunity, could you get that out to the board?
Be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Anything else on page 18? Okay, then I'll go to page 19. Questions? Don't let me miss anyone, please.
I got one question, Ms. Carmody.
Who is that? I missed.
James.
James, go ahead.
It's not much, but 36-200 recycling services. So I just, can somebody refresh my memory? I mean, I noticed it doubled here and I did read the note that it said it was suspended. But was that an expected expense that we had saved on the 2021 budget, which is why it was only half? Or is it something that's actually doubling from, you know, something unexpected that HQ is potentially charging us now?
Sure. I'm going to defer to Mrs. Mallett if she is still on. I don't, she might be on the second screen, so I don't see her.
There she is.
There she is, okay.
So I will tell you that that part of that increase is due to the fact that at the time that we prepared the budget in the previous year, we were still negotiating with HQ. So we were under budgeted on that line item when we finally entered into a contract. So the $7,000 increase is the organic recycling, which is a monthly fee, plus a makeup of the under budgeted amount in the previous budget.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Thank you, Jen. James, that answer your question sufficiently?
Yep.
Okay, anything else on page 19, board members? Or anyone?
A question?
Yes, Dave Falwell.
During this year, the 2021 school year, did we save any money in regards to field trips? And if so, could any of that money used or, or actually more, my question is, did we save any money this year from field trips?
Yes, that'll be part of my report to the finance committee on Monday evening that, you know, obviously our students are not participating in any field trips at this time. So there will be a savings in that line.
Do you know the current savings off the top of your head?
My recollection, when I looked at a report earlier today, there has not been any expenditures from that line item this year. So I would say that in both the band and orchestra field trip account for the 2021 line item of $36,000 and system-wide field trips of 39,450 of $22,000, I do not think we've had any expenditures in those two lines to date. But I will be confirming that with the finance committee on Monday.
And same thing with student activities? Or have those been going on?
There'll still be some cost with student activities. We are trying to continue doing some of those things, you know, remote. And some of those funds are also used for recognitions at the year end, which we still are certainly hoping that our senior class will be able to have some of the recognitions that were missed out at the end of 2020.
Thank you.
That could change though, Sherry, right?
Yeah, certainly. I wish I had a crystal ball of what May and June will look like this year. I do not.
Okay, all right, thank you. Dave Falwell, any more questions on that or is that okay with what?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to page 20, which just was a rationale for the, and I don't think we really have to go over that. Any questions on page 20?
This is James. I do have one question on that. For that first, that first item, 31-850. So there's a note on there that says funding and accounts 12-150 and 46910 have been eliminated. You know, so I looked at the 12-150 specifically and it looked like it was the same from 19, or from 20 to 21 to 20 to 22. So I'm not sure if that was a mistake or not, but, and the other one, I think, was only maybe around like $5,000. So, I mean, is there something that increased by $30,000 or is it just shifting money?
It's just shifting the money. Sorry, that was the one thing I covered early in the meeting that we just reclassified the cost of our athletic training contrast that previously, because it is an outside contractor, previously it was always listed as part of salaries. So just to correct the classification, we moved the $26,500 that traditionally was in that line over to the purchase service section of the budget. So of the 34, $26,000 is moving that. And then the difference is the cost of ambulance coverage that we provide at football games. So we essentially just moved the salary line into the purchase service. So it looks like a large increase, but there's a corresponding significant decrease in the salary section.
Okay.
Does that explain it for you, James?
Yes.
Page 20, any other comments? Questions? I see none, I'll go on to 21, which are our account explanations. Am I missing anyone's hand or no? Okay, with that, 21, 22. I see you all did your homework. Very good. We'll move on to page 23. I had one question on 23, where? Now, I don't know, anyone have anything on 23? I thought I had one, but I must, I don't. Am I missing?
Are you guys traveling too?
I'm sorry, what?
No, I just see a whole bunch of travel expenses. I'm just kind of curious, where are we doing travel, travel to?
You're looking at some wider vocational, what are you looking at, James?
Line 23, about maybe four or five lines up from the bottom. Says like business office, travel expenses, stuff like that. I'm just curious where you guys are traveling.
So most of that is the monthly mileage stipends that are part of contracts. For example, in the FAA contract, there are stipends for the coordinators who are traveling a month school. So it's the monthly mileage allotment for administrative staff.
That explaining for you, James? That's, that's in the stipend in their salaries, right, Sherry?
Yes, there, it's listed in the FAA contract. And then we have other administrators that by contract have a monthly stipend for travel.
Okay. Anything else on 23? Page 24. Anyone? Did I miss anybody? Dave, did you, Darrenowski, did you want something? No?
No, we're good.
Okay. Going on to supplies and materials. Page 25.
Just to note, when you get into the detail, you know, when you look at this cover sheet in comparison to the purchase service that has such a minimal increase, you know, this 8.57 looks like, you know, we're having this huge increase in our overall supply account when really a number of the accounts are decreasing and the increases are really limited to just a few specific line items that we can get into more detail on page 26.
Hey, questions on that page? Which brings us to page 26.
I have one question.
Who am I, who am I missing here?
The music supplies, music supplies have gone down $5,333. The reductions are, I'm just curious what that is. Because I know we had talked years ago, we have a fund going in to replace musical instruments each year, but I'm wondering what the reduction is.
Yeah, so the new music equipment line 44-200 at the bottom of that page is still intact at $11,000. And the music supply line item really is a per pupil allotment. I did go back and review those numbers and I'm happy to look at them again. But when I see what the expenditure was in 1920, I'm feeling pretty good about that number, but I will make a note to go back and review both the middle school and high school enrollment numbers.
Thank you. What number is that on page 26, Dave?
40900.
Okay.
Just, just one other comment on 42205, ebook licenses going down $12,800. Is that from recurring ebooks? We bought the license, we now can recurrently use it? Or is that because we're buying more, more textbooks?
No, they, they are on a six-year cycle, the ebooks. And so we just happen to be at a point this year, for going for next year, there's only one ebook license up for renewals because we've been renewing them, you know, various cycles. So it's, that's depends just on any given year, that number can fluctuate a little.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on page 26?
I'm sorry.
Who am I missing?
Go ahead, Dave. You go first.
So I just have a question regarding the line 42300 and 4, oh wait, yeah. 42300 and 42250, the consumable workbooks. I'm just wondering why they're such a, especially now that we're one-to-one. Was this something that was anticipated before? Something that was scheduled up for renewal, more consumable workbooks? So I just wanted to know what was the story behind that.
Sure. We used to do the, just it was initially the K2 ready classroom, but it was a part of a phased-in implementation. So we are now going the entire K5 ready classroom. We had presented that to CNI over the past couple academic years. And the grade six through eight is going transitioning from big ideas to illustrative math, which also has a workbook. I think one of the things we've definitely learned with math is it's very hard to do math on a computer. The Mrs. Oppone actually tried to pilot it with a group of teachers last year with illustrative math, because you can upload those workbooks onto a device. It, how do you manipulate PDF documents and annotate on them on a device? So ELA, not so much, it's a lot easier because you can type, you know, text, but, but math with the special characters and a lot of the algorithms and whatnot, it's just harder to navigate. We also know that the kids benefit from the color copies that come with the workbooks because a lot of the graphs and stuff that they're using for the different data analysis and whatnot are in color. And if you were to, if we were to print them off at a print center here, we, it's hard for the kids sometimes to distinguish the different shades and colors and whatnot that they would get in the workbooks. And then lastly, we can't necessarily, we actually investigated a print, outsourcing printing of these and they were copyright protected. So we couldn't, we couldn't find a cheaper alternative.
Dave, answer your question? Dave Falwell?
Yeah, I just said, thank you.
Anyone else? Did you have another item on that page, Dave? No?
James has got his hand up.
James does.
James, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. So this is, it's, it's kind of relating to the oil and gas heat. There's a note on page 28 that, you know, the Karen Smith Academy converted from, from oil to gas. But I'm just looking at the numbers, right? 41-500, 41-650. I think we saved about 11 and a half thousand from oil and then our bill increased by about 20,000. So are we paying more for gas heat than we were for oil? I'm not familiar with oil.
That's a great question and I'm happy to get to answer that. We try to lock in our oil pricing early. And when the rates really dropped during COVID last spring, we locked in to purchase oil for the, not only the 20, I got to get on my twenties right, not only for the 2021 year, but also for the 2122 year. And those were locked in prior to the conversion of gas at the Karen Smith Academy. So the good news is that we may have a little bit of a surplus. We'll make sure that we use the, any oil that we purchased and fill tanks at the end of the year. But we're unable to realize the savings of moving to gas at the Karen Smith Academy right now because we locked into buying a specific number of gallons of fuel oil for the, for next year. So you should reap the benefits of that savings in the following year.
Okay, do you know, I mean, off the top of your head, do you know how much were the savings? Like percentage-wise, is it like 50% cheaper? Or something like that?
Yeah, no, I can certainly get that information, but I don't have it right in front of me.
But, well, you can have that, you think, for Thursday, Sherry?
Yeah, I will follow up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions on that page? Well, that, that actually brought us to page 28, am I right, guys? Are we on 28?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on 28? Which brings us to 29 and 30. Explanations. You okay? Of course, I'm going to move on, no questions? Did I miss somebody? No? Okay, we'll go to 31. No questions? See, Sherry, when you do a good job, we don't have a lot of questions. Good girl.
When you don't have a lot of increases, there's not a lot of questions. We could blow right, you might have your Thursday night free at this rate, Mrs. Carmody.
I know, we were just, you know, we're just doing a great job. Or you're doing a great job. Okay, let's turn to page 32. Regular education equipment summary. Interesting, any questions? Comments?
I will just add a comment that, you know, this equipment section, as well as the major projects and equipment, I kind of put my plug in annually because, you know, it is frustrating for the Board of Education to continually be looking as if they're requesting an increase in these line items. And it's really because the funding that's requested in the Board of Ed budget ends up being reduced through the reallocation plan. A lot of these items are unable to be bought. And so the following year, again, it always looks like an increase. And it would be so wonderful if we could have a, like almost a standard dollar amount in, instead of just for the contingency that you see was funded in 2021 of a total of $25,000. There were no other new equipment line items that were part of this budget. So any addition looks like an increase to the Board of Ed budget. Whereas if we were able to fund something, like even if it was a flat dollar amount, it would stop looking like we are adding to the budget annually. And, and that's what's also happening when we get to that major projects and equipment. With all of those line items, you know, being reduced during reallocation, our budget increase of almost over $600,000 in that section, again, looks like a continual increase rather than having some flat funding like many of these other line items that stay similar year to year. It doesn't look like we're constantly asking for an increase. So that's my little infomercial on equipment and major projects.
Good job, Sherry.
So you're talking, Sherry, you're talking similar to like what we did years ago with the, with the band equipment, right? Put something in there so there's a standing. It's not, it's not buying new stuff, it's replacing broken stuff or something.
And you'll, and you'll see in the major projects and equipment, you know, we have a section for system-wide replacement. We know every year we're going to need some new desks. We know every year, we're going to need some new desks at the high school and new chairs at the high school, replace some cafeteria tables. And the time and attendance system, you know, two or three of those are going to go down, you're going to need to, to upgrade those annually. And if we don't fund it, it ends up being something that we're either hoping can get done through non-lapsing funding, hoping it can get done with, you know, any funding left at the end of the year, if we put a purchase plan together. But it's just frustrating to know that you don't have those dollars there for something that we, you know, we can all sit here today, Mr. Arroyo, and I could see him on the line. You know, he will be asking for desks for, you know, next year and the year after, I, I know that. And if we just could fund some of those annual requests and know that we have the funding, it wouldn't constantly look like the request from the superintendent of the Board of Education is requesting an increase annually.
And thank you.
It's scheduled maintenance. We need to, we need to make sure that we have it in our budget for maintenance.
Have to, right? Before it's unusable, falls apart.
Exactly.
And moving on to any other questions on 32? Colin, your hand side up, is it?
Nope, I was just scratching my back, thank you.
Well, I couldn't tell, all right, page 33. Regular education equipment summary. Questions, comments?
I'm just curious, curious what a scorebot robotic arm is.
I have no idea.
I can assure you that Mrs. Mallett or Mr. Arroyo could fill you in on that.
I can't tell you what it does, but it is, I believe it's connected to the project Lead the Way. The robotic arm that doesn't work anymore that we desperately need replaced for the curriculum.
And sewing machines, they still use sewing machines, Sherry, huh?
Clearly, I did not learn much in that class, but yes, they still use. Thank goodness for Mr. Gladio downtown.
Yes, I know, I know.
I got one question before we move on, Miss Carmody.
Sure, go right ahead, James.
And this is probably just because this is, you know, I don't know where this is on, in the budget here, but, you know, I see chemistry balances on there. And I'm just kind of curious about other chemistry equipment that's almost like consumables, like if you think about like acids and stuff, right? You use it once and you, you know, it's, it's gone, right? Where's that covered in the budget, you know, when we have to rebuy it every year? All the stuff that you do, all the chemistry experiments with.
Sure, that would be part of our science supply per pupil line item.
Okay, so that's, it's, it's in a, is it in a different section?
Yeah, it would be in the supply section on page 26. Account 41200.
Okay. Got it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, without James? Anybody else have questions? All right, going on to other objects. Page 34. Regular education, other objects. See, decrease, questions, comments?
Do we not renew, I'm curious, do we not renew a particular renewal of membership?
The, the renewals change annually, the, the bigger ones stay the same. And I can say that most of our memberships, organizations have been freezing any increases for a number of years. So we've been able to hold on that.
Excellent.
That's great. That brings us to special projects, right, guys?
Yep.
Questions? Comments?
Real quick one, the replacement cycle for two-way radios. Are they saying that they're being worn out?
I'll have Mr. Romano speak to that. I will say that we were fortunate to get some radios funded through the coronavirus relief fund to make sure of social distancing and having, you know, more people stationed at different areas around the building. But I, it seems as if we are constantly getting requests for adding radios or replacement of radios, Mr. Romano.
Sure. When I got here six years ago, we had just purchased the radios. And first, we had no radios that were broken, no radios that had any issues. As time's gone on, it was, you know, year three, the second year. And, and it's only wise that when we have 178 radios right now, that we figure going to have a, a tradition, that they're going to die over time, they're, they're not, they're not expected to have a, a unuseful life. They have a, you know, a five-year life, and we're beyond that. So I do plan to put in for 10% each year, or it might have been 5% each year for radios.
Dave, do you want to ask you to answer your question?
Well, it's an answer.
One you don't like, or you want to?
I just don't quite understand, that's all, I didn't realize we had 178 radios.
Yeah.
Sorry.
What's, what's the, I guess, you know, now when, when everybody has a cell phone, I'm not sure if we have, we give out company phones, but what, what do they do that company phones, like you can't just make a phone call to who you want to talk to here?
So the radios are used for a bunch of uses, including emergencies, the emergency channel. So all the radios can communicate throughout the district, along with the police department, which has some units on their, on their possession, as well as a base unit at the, at the, at their patrol station. They are used frequently between the secretaries and the custodians, the gym classes take them out. So if there's an emergency, they have a way to communicate. It's a safety issue, and it is considerably faster than phones.
Okay.
I had one thing to that, when we've done lockout lockdown drills, or we've done safety drills across the district, and, and the police have been involved, those come across all the radios, all at one time. So when I'm on the administrator's channel, I hear all of that, regardless of whether it's one school, two schools, or, or all of our schools.
Oh, it becomes a safety issue then, Mr. Ron and Mr. Canellin, correct?
Correct.
I believe our, the initial radios were purchased as part of that school safety and security grant, if I'm not mistaken, right, Peter?
That is correct.
Right.
I think the one other thing I'll, I'll add is that, you know, when you, because we have this, when you have a radio, I think you just said it's in, but if I call you, I'm making one call. If I get on my radio, I could hit 50 people at once.
Right.
And we also have the issue of connectivity, high school still pretty much thinks up there, right? So if I make a phone call, if there's an emergency, I think that we've got some issues there.
We have complaints, yeah, we have, we have complaints all the time from parents who's, because of the cell phone service in that general area between the high school and DePaulo, they're nine tenths of a mile apart and the calls drop all the time. In the, in the Kelly School area, you get up into that region, it drops, over on East Street, it drops. So the cell phone service isn't reliable, whereas the, you know, the radios are, are actually a wonderful safety device for all of us.
And didn't we put in a few years ago repeaters so that you could cover the whole town at any location? So I could be at the high school, or I could be at Thalberg or, or over at Kennedy, and I can get anywhere in town, correct?
That is correct, with, with specific radios, we don't give that function to everybody, except that everybody has the emergency channel. So everybody can get throughout the district emergency-wide. There is an administrator's channel that is district-wide, there is a maintenance channel that's district-wide that custodians and maintenance have. But the actual schools individually have their, they don't even need the repeaters for the individual schools, but we do have five repeaters in the district.
Excellent. The only other question I'll ask, you got 50 batteries, that's because these batteries, they don't last, they, they, they burn, right? You, you charge, you charge, use, and eventually they don't accept charges anymore, right?
That's correct.
The whole unit, you're just replacing a battery at that point.
Right, just the battery. And, and we are saving, you know, units that, the two-way radios that are no longer functioning, we are saving for parts, for knobs, for antennas. We do our best to recycle where we can with them.
Thank you, Mr. Ronald, any other questions on the radios? All right, moving on to page, I think, 39. Am I right, everybody?
Yeah.
Which is regular education, special budget summary. Excuse me, questions, comments? Hey? Did I see none, right?
Is the AGSI increase covered by a grant?
Um, not, not in these specific line items that we traditionally have covered in our budget. That's not to say we couldn't revisit some of these lines to see if grant funding could cover it. But the ASTE specific funding that comes in is really supposed to be for new, you know, that whole supply plant issue. So we traditionally have covered these specific costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Okay, page 40.
You'll see the change here under the continuing education program with the one-line item looking to have our contribution for the new partnership that's being established.
Anyone have a question, I please don't want to miss anyone. Comments, questions on page 40? I guess we go to page 41 and 42. Anyone?
Yes, this is James, I have a question.
Go ahead, James, where are you, there you go, go ahead, James.
All right, for the, the consortium program contribution, so it says we've partnered with Bristol. Do we have any kind of formalized agreement with them on, on costs or anything like that, or is that just kind of ad hoc, that we're doing it for, for this year?
Mr. Medancy?
They submitted ahead of time a, what I would call a budget proposal in terms of what the end cost would be to Southington to enter into a collaborative. And they basically took what our operating costs were to make sure that it did not increase. And they, we have a, a letter of agreement with them, and we're just waiting on a contract that reflects this budgeted amount.
And then, and then in the future going forward, is it, is it just going to be the same amount?
No, some of it depends on the size of the program. But with that, we can also be eligible for increased state grant funding as, as the program grows. We're looking at expanding, you know, into, to pathways programs and whatnot that. So given the, the collaboration and the size, we could be eligible for more grant funding. So it's hard to tell what the total net cost might end up being to the district, but a lot of it is, is based on overall cost or size of the program.
Okay.
Okay, on that, anyone else? 41, 42. Questions, comments? We all set, so we're going to go to special education. The increase is 4.26%, Sherry?
Yes.
Okay. Which is, tell me how much money that is, Sherry?
The proposed budget is $28,081,260, and the increase is just over 1.1 million.
Okay. And that's to the increase, that's due to the increase in the number of students in the programs, is that correct? And other, and personnel and so forth, right?
It's like, I don't want to say it's just due to the increase in personnel in the program, it's due to a variety of reasons. So it's due to the increases in salaries for the individual, for the staff associated with special education. It's due to the increase in the overall cost of tuition and transportation, especially for our outplaced students. And then the new personnel that we are requesting, that you'll see outlined further into this budget.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions on that? We see the summary of, on, I don't know what page that is, so we'll move on to page 45.
I have a question, Miss Carmody.
Sure, go ahead, James.
For the psychologists, you know, I noticed we are planning on getting one extra FTE to replace.
What page are you on, 20, 45?
45, yeah. Line 83116. What's that?
I have it, thank you.
Oh, gotcha, okay. So it looks like we're, we're replacing services previously contracted through Wheeler Clinic. Do you know if there's a net savings there? Or, I mean, does it cost us more to hire somebody versus contracting the, this, those services out?
So I, I have to go back, I know that the expectation was that there's a savings with the hiring of the school psychologist versus using Wheeler Clinic, and certainly getting more hours by having our own full-time staff member in the program. And just help me out, either Ms. Cavallaro or Mr. Canellin, the current year, did we end the current contract with Wheeler? I just don't remember, if that happened this year, we're starting that next year?
Not yet, that'll be for next year.
Okay.
So that, so that current contract, as I recall, is about $108,000.
So on page 45, if you go down to the purchase service line of 83319, you will see that there's a reduction of $48,750 in that line item. And my recollection is that is mostly due to the savings of the Wheeler Clinic contract.
Okay, but, but, so just by hiring a psychologist, though, we're, we're going to be getting more hours, did I, did I hear that correctly? So we're not, we're not contracting 40 hours today, and we're going to be hiring a psychologist that, that works 40 hours, is that right?
So if I can, if I can speak to that, and I know Ms. Cavallaro was on as well, the, with the current model, the, the contract is with Wheeler Clinic, and the person is from the outside, and they do work a specific number of hours, which closely mirrors the school day. When we hire our own person, as we did with the team program at DePaulo, that person is under contract, they follow the teacher's contract hours. So we, we do benefit from the additional hours, we benefit from the cost savings, and we benefit from the flexibility in terms of, of what that person is, is able to do. And we have some more dedicated services that are more under our umbrella. With the team program that has worked out favorably for us, it's been pretty successful. And it was essentially a parallel, where there was a contract with an outside agency, and we decided that A, it was too expensive to do it that way, and B, we had more control when we brought it in-house with the same type of thing in terms of savings and flexibility. So we, we believe that that's exactly what's going to happen with this particular scenario.
Answer your question?
Yep.
Anybody else? So, so we're looking that, that it probably will be a savings for us, right? Am I right about that, Sherry?
Savings or cost avoidance is what I would say, yes. It's reshuffling the dollars.
Okay, all right. Um, anything else on page 45? 46.
Yes, James, again, sorry for all the questions.
Anything you want at any time, please.
Yep, out of town tuition, you know, $400,000 increase. I, I don't know, I guess I didn't really read too much into it, there was an explanation behind that, but could, could you go into detail about what that is and why it's going up so much?
Sure. Just in that line item, you really have to net the two dow, the two lines of 83370 and 83371, because our reimbursement rate for out-of-town tuition versus, for an LEA student, which is locally agent, local, locally placed versus an agency-placed. We only, we get back on an agency-placed student, the formula is supposed to work that the reimbursement for access cost is once we spend one times the per pupil allotment. So assuming our per pupil allotment is averaging about $15,000, we don't, we would get funding back once we spend the 15. However, we all know that the state then caps that excess cost, and we never get dollar for dollar, and it's generally in the 70 to 75 cents on a dollar. However, in the local place, we have to spend four and a half times the per pupil expenditure, so that 15,000 times. So that fifteen thousand times four and a half prior to getting any of that reimbursement that again is capped. So the makeup of our students changed a little bit, so we have fewer agency placed students. And more locally placed students, or the cost of those students is, you know, is increasing. As well, you know, we are continuing to expand our in-district programming, but that hasn't stopped us from having students that do need to be outplaced. And I'm happy to throw that over to Mrs. Cavallaro if she has anything to add.
No, that's, that's pretty much the explanation regards to tuition.
That's, that's something that we don't, we don't offer these students in-house in Southington with one of our existing programs.
I think what happens is there, for the most part, we are able to program within the programs that we have across the district. However, there's a handful of students that have needs that far surpass the capacity that Southington can offer. Whether it be therapeutic needs or mental health issues. Certainly it's specific to the student, but those are the extreme cases and that's where the tuition's involved.
Okay.
To James, or do you have some further explanation on that?
Yeah, yeah, we, we can move on. I, I mean, I have other questions about that, but I don't think it's related to the budget here.
Well, no, you can certainly ask that. You, you understand that we have ended our special ed. The special ed department certainly in all the years I've been here, they have expanded the programs that we are offering. But as, has been said, there are those students that we just cannot meet their needs and we have to outplace them and it's very, very expensive.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my, my question's more along the lines of like, well, who determines, you know, whether those needs are being met? And it's, it's not budget related, really.
Well, I
There's actually, I, I actually can provide a relatively concise answer to that. There's a group of individuals called the Planning and Placement Team. And the Planning and Placement Team consists of parents, school professionals, sometimes outside experts. They do evaluations on the students and come back to the table, look at the results of the evaluations and then make recommendations for programming. So that's the, that's the group that has the legal authority delegated by Congress to make those types of decisions for students with special needs. And oftentimes, the, it's a, it's a series of successive approximations. Sometimes we just get to a point where we, any school district, just can't meet the, the combination of significant needs that a particular student might have. And that's kind of, that's kind of vary from year to year. And so therefore you'll see some variability in this particular line item over, over time, if you will.
Uh, James, if you'd like to pursue that with special ed, um, I'm sure you can set up an appointment with Rebecca. Or any, any one of our coordinators and they can explain that further to you, okay? Please ask the questions as you, as they arise, please, feel free to.
Thanks, dear. Yeah, like it was just something I just don't understand too much about, you know, this is all new to me. So I'm not familiar with how, how that system works or anything, but yeah, thank, thank you, Tim, for the explanation. That's great. And Rebecca also, and Sherry.
Okay, going, are we finished with forty-six, everyone? And forty-seven? Yes, everybody? Did I say something I missed? What? No? Okay, um, supporting information. Um, on page forty-eight, I think, is all pretty self-explanatory. And forty-nine.
This is Carmody?
Yes.
Before we move on.
Dave, is that you, Fabio?
Yeah, that's me.
What now? What page, Dave?
Forty-eight, I just wanted to stop you before you went to page forty-nine.
Okay, sure.
So I see for some of the new positions, they're funding from the Nexus tuitions. I wanted to know what that was and is that, how long does that funding last? So was it only funding for this year and then we'll have to pay for it next year? So I just want to know how that works.
Sure. So our revenues for, for students as part of net, for our Nexus billing has been increasing. And essentially what that is, is you know, we have a number of students that are in Southington Public Schools as part of the open choice program. And we cover the regular education cost for those students. However, many do come with additional special education needs and they're getting service hours from our staff. Part of the reason of, you know, the increasing hours district-wide and needing some additional staff, not just for those students, but since we are able to build back Hartford for the cost of the special education services that those students are receiving, we're able to utilize those dollars to fund some additional positions since those students are receiving services from our staff. So we thought this was a unique way to try to add the additional staffing that we need here in Southington. We have been invoiced, you know, we, we have, I don't have the number in front of me, but probably eighty to ninety open choice students. I'd go out and it ranges, it's ranged over the years from eighty to maybe a hundred and six open choice students, I would say. And our billings over the past couple of years have been in excess of four hundred thousand dollars. And so we thought this was an appropriate time to try to utilize that for the staffing needs that we have. I don't see it going down necessarily as students continue, all students seem to come with students have more needs, whether it be a Southington student or a heart student coming from Hartford. We have students that are participating in our agricultural science and technology program too, that may have special education needs that we're also billing back those communities. So this isn't, you know, the Nexus costs are coming from a variety of communities, although we have the highest influx of students from Hartford, so they are the ones primarily paying for the additional special education cost.
And thank you for answering that for me. I also see under the school psychologist that, apparently that we were, we were contracting a psychologist from Wheeler Clinic. So with the, with this new personnel, am I correct in saying that we will no longer be needing to contract a school psychologist from Wheeler Clinic?
Correct.
Yes. That was the, that was the question that Mr. Shenowski asked.
Yeah, that's gone. That's the savings.
You said my name correctly.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Good, good to ask the question, Dave.
So my, my, my comment, yeah, I was just commenting that it was the same, that was the same position that we were talking about before, so yes.
Dave Dernowski?
Yeah, the Nexus funding is what's the likelihood that that's going to continue on for you know, years?
I, I don't see there being any change to the fact that they are trying to continuing to bring students into suburban districts in Hartford. You know, shuffle, the chef settlement goes back a long time. I think they would love to be able to continue to increase the number of students that are coming to Southington. So I, I don't see that there's going to be a reduction of those services. A reduction of the students coming in and therefore the, the need of services.
Yeah, the only concern I have is, you know, whenever you get funding from an outside source and we end up hiring the, the people, they now are on our payroll. And if the funding source dries up, now we have to find money from other sources. So just, just want to just bring it up to be, you know, for, as an awareness factor.
Yeah.
But there's no, is there any talk about changing the open choice?
No, and, and it's just to kind of maybe help calm the fears a little bit, because I certainly understand that utilizing, you know, revenue to cover expenses, you know, and if that was to dry up, the other source would also be from choice, the choice grant. We also receive dollars based on the students that are in Southington as part of a choice program. And those grant funds have helped and host, fund a variety of professional development opportunities and needs that we have in any of the buildings for students that are here, but that would be kind of a secondary place to go. If for some reason you had a year where the Nexus tuition billing was to decrease, you could tap into those choice funds as a backup.
Okay, Dave, that was your question. Did that answer you?
Yeah, I'm good.
But I mean, a good point, because we never know what's going to happen. But chef versus O'Neal has never been settled, so that's, I, I would have to assume that's going to continue. Don't you, Sherry, think so for a long time? Yeah. Okay, so that brings me to forty-nine, I think. Am I right? Um, any questions? And we go to, I'm just checking, what time is it? Seven twenty-one, right, okay. Page fifty. Rational for accounts with an increase over five percent. Anyone? About page fifty-one. No hands?
Can I just ask you a question? The, the rental of the eight three three seven two on page fifty-one, it's the first item. The stellar facilities, do they have the same setup that they had at Lincoln College with the kitchen? You know, teaching life skills and that type of thing. They do, Steve? Yes, they have it set up there. Okay, thank you.
Why don't you want to go there and learn, Holly? How to cook?
Yes, I, I would like to learn, Mrs. Carmody, since you won't give me lessons, but that's okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that the facilities were comparable to what they, you know, because I remember everyone talking about how wonderful it was at Lincoln College and I was just hoping that it would be emulated at, at Abbey Park for them.
I think you should visit someday, okay?
Well, I, unfortunately, this year I'm not able to take any of the stellar students, because I usually have a stellar student or two at my school, you know, learning skills. In fact, I'm doing, just so you know, I am doing a, a Zoom with the stellar program. They're going to talk about early childhood with me, so.
Well, I hope it will make us as proud as Mr. Brown did the other day when he
Well, he's, he's a very hard act to follow. But I'll try.
I'm sure you'll be fine.
I will try.
On page fifty-two, or am I done with fifty-one? I apologize. Yes? Okay, yes?
Yep.
Fifty-two, the special education salaries account explanation. No hands, right?
All right, just letting the dog out.
Well, Sherry, you can't leave when they're telling me because I can't
The door is right here, I gotta be able to run and let him in and out. Sorry.
That's okay. Page fifty-three, question. Fifty-four? Which brings us to page fifty-five. And, um, it is now seven twenty-four and I am going to make an executive decision so that we have something left for Thursday. Is this, where's Mr. Canellin? Is this okay if I do this, Tim?
Mrs. Carmody, you are the board chair. You, you can do that, absolutely.
I have a lot of authority, right, Tim?
You, you do.
Oh, yeah, sure. Okay. Uh, is it, is it okay with the rest of the board if we end here this evening? Um, I would since, and I thank you all for staying and those guests that are there to listen to all of this. I would ask the board members if you have any specific questions from what we went over tonight to bring it in on Thursday. And on Thursday night, I'm marking down that we are going to begin on page fifty-six, okay? We all set?
Yeah.
Sherry, I think you have a few things that you can email to the board, the questions, or you want to just give it to them Thursday night or whatever, easiest for you, Sherry.
Sure, we'll work on the Q and A and depending on when we have all the answers, we'll, we'll try to send that out in advance of the meeting for Thursday night.
Okay. Um, any other board members have anything they'd like to say? Um, of course, because the booklet is so well done and the explanations are so well done. And of course, we are only asking for things that, that we need. Um, I, I'm just very pleased with this budget and I think we all should be. So I thank you very much for your time and look forward to being with you again on Thursday at six o'clock, is that correct? Good night, everyone, and thank you very good night. Good night, everybody.
Take care.